Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools Special School Committee Meeting. It's Tuesday, May 30th, 2023, 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 29, 2023 Order extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A Section 20. Per Open Meeting Law, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this meeting. We are recording this meeting and will be uploaded to GCTV likely tomorrow. And we will move right into the agenda. Secretary Extrim, can I have a roll call, please?
Member Denise?
Here.
Secretary Extrim, I am here. Member Johnson Mossad?
I am here.
Vice Chair Martini?
Here.
Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weidinger?
Here.
All are present and we have a quorum.
Excellent. So we're called to order at 6:01 PM. I would like to, at this point, ask for a motion to table the executive session as planned as item, agenda item number two. We've had a last minute change to the details of that item and it is not ready. We will postpone it for our regular meeting on June, Wednesday, June 14. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Anyone need any further details about that?
That's specifically reviewing Unit A.
Well, it's right now an executive session item, so it will be, the details will be revealed when we come back into a public session and discuss it.
Okay, but that's, that's the one you're referencing. Okay.
And?
I just have one point of clarification. I think the motion is to postpone, not to table. Those are two different things.
If you prefer, we can postpone it. I don't quite know what, what difference it makes, but I'm fine with either.
Okay.
And any further discussion? Okay, so hearing done, we will do a roll call vote on that.
Secretary?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, Member Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidinger?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. At this point, we will move into public comment. And as I indicated before the start of the meeting, if you're here for public comment and you are able to indicate in the chat that you would like to make a public comment, we'll start with those. You can just put your name. Please do not use the chat for any other reason other than that. And if you're not able, you may just hold on and we will ask verbally for people who are interested in making a public comment but can only indicate so by voice. So we'll go in order. Jesus Leva, please. You have three minutes and state for the record your name, full name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Jesus Leva. Address is 32 High Street, Apartment 6. I actually sent my public comment to all members of the school committee before this meeting, but I'm just going to simply reiterate the words here. If you want the full detailed explanation, please read that email. I'm basically here to ask for the motion that's being made against the mayor concerning the open meeting violation complaint. I'm asking, I'm asking people to disregard this. I think it's wildly inappropriate, especially given that the email is specifically to correct a piece of misinformation regarding school enrollment. That information was reported accurately in the recorder and was reiterated accurately by the mayor. We have two different sets of enrollment and each have different implications for funding for Greenfield schools. There is 157, 158 decline in student enrollment in terms of actual in district enrollment because we're sending those kids to charter schools and to school choices to other districts and that has an implication of about $300,000 for us. Then there is the decline in 57 students in foundation enrollment, which is the number of students who are enrolled in any schools regardless of whether they're in Greenfield or not. And that has an implication of about $500,000 in lost Chapter 70 money. It's really important that we work with accurate information when we're talking about these issues because if we want to fix the funding or advocate for it properly, we have to be using accurate information and I don't think that the complaint is appropriate. Furthermore, I'd really like to see the school committee instead turning its intention to advocacy that it could be doing at the state level to bring more money to the Greenfield School Committee. Because in 2018, when school committees across the state banded together for the Student Opportunities Act, that provided an additional $1.7 million which we saw in our Chapter 70 money last year for Greenfield. That's the kind of work that we need school committee to be doing. There are currently bills that are pending that really need the help of the school committee to advocate for. You know, SB 335 and SB 337 are both bills that specifically deal with special education funding and would bring hundreds of thousands of new dollars to Greenfield schools. So would Senate Bill 303, which specifically makes it so that the foundational portion of the budget that the state has as its share would be increased under this bill over a five-year period. I, again, really want to emphasize that we need to be doing that work. It's important if we want to fund our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one on the list is Pamela Goodwin. And you have three minutes. State your full name and your address. And go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Pamela Goodwin. I live at 54 High Street in Apartment 307. I've made a number of public comments during city council in support of funding our schools. I've had some experience with the Open Meeting Law in various settings in, in other cities and towns. I've seen violations that happened pretty frequently, really. And I only briefly got online this afternoon because of today's schedule and skimmed. Well, I read carefully Chair Poiety's assertions and I also read briefly the mayor's response and then a lawyer's response who, unless I misunderstood it, kind of changed his original thing and said it's a difference weighing 45 days per this general law and, but really it should have been 60 some days. So I am unaware. I'll admit that I might be poorly informed about a few things. But I believe strongly in, in having an open meeting law and not violating it and doing our best, whether it's a school committee member or the mayor in following it pretty carefully. So I'm glad to be here. I would like to thank all the hard work. I remember when people were interviewing school committee members all those months ago and I'm unable to attend the school committee meetings on any kind of a steady basis. So I guess we'll just see how it plays out. I would like to think that if someone feels there have made an error, that there would be an opportunity to apologize. I rarely see that. And I also think an apology or forgiveness or whatever you want to call it is kind of where we need to head off in that direction. I also agree with Jesus. I lobby all the time at the, at the House and at the Senate and I testify in person and I testify hybridly for housing constantly for over nine years now. And I don't think it's just the school committee that needs to get going on how we're going to get some state money. I think the entire city, every parent, every grandma, which I am, a grandmother of six. And I think everybody that are screaming yell for funding so that we don't have this constant problem year after year after year. And I don't care whether it's education or if it's housing, but we're always scrambling for money. And it's not going to go away unless people really start holding the state accountable. So thank you for your time and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Those are the only two I see listed for public comment in the chat. Is there anyone else you can indicate at this point verbally, just unmute and indicate you'd like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not hearing anyone else going once, going twice. Okay, and so the next agenda item is actually the Open Meeting Law complaint. And as I am the complainant on this, I am going to cede the chair role to Vice Chair Martini and log off of the meeting. Secretary Extrim, I would just remind you that you are the one recording. And you and Vice Chair Martini are both co-hosts of the meeting, so you should be able to continue seamlessly after I log off. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll march forward.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Open Meeting Law Complaints. And for the sake of clarity, I am just going to begin by reading the description of the alleged violation. I hope everyone has had a chance to read this already, but if you haven't, this is the text. "Thursday, 4/20/23 at 4:37 PM on this day, Mayor Roxanne Weida Gardner, a voting member of the school committee, sent the attached email to all school committee members concerning the matter of the school budget, which at that time and still is a topic up for deliberation within the school committee. She expresses a personal opinion and shares it in an email and makes no attempt to make the information public or share the information publicly at a meeting of the school committee. Tuesday, 5/16/23 at 1:06 PM on this day, Mayor Roxanne Weida Gardner, a voter, voting member of the school committee forwarded an email thread to all school committee members containing a legal opinion she sought related to ongoing fiscal year 2024 school budget discussions. She initiates a deliberation and expresses an opinion on a topic we should only be discussing publicly as a full body. As with the Thursday 4/20 email, she makes no attempt to make the information public or share the information publicly at a meeting of the school committee. And following that, in response to what action do you want the public body to take in response to your complaint, the complainant, which is the chair of the school committee, Amy Poiety wrote, "I would like the Greenfield School Committee to discuss this complaint as an agenda item at an upcoming public meeting of the body. At that time, I feel it is appropriate for the committee as a whole to discuss appropriate remedy." I am not going to read the emails in question. I trust you have all already read them. I am, however, going to read the instructions to the public body that receives a complaint. So in regards to how an open meeting law complaint must be made, the person who is going to make the complaint must send it to the members of the public body and, or rather to the chair of the public body, but in this case, since the complaint, it was the chair, it was her role to disseminate the complaint to the members. The public body must then meet to review the complaint within 14 business days, usually 20 to 22 calendar days. At this point, I think we're 10 days out. And after review, but within 14 business days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complainant a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the same time, the body must send the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its counsel or a staff member, but only after the public body has met to review the complaint. And if we require more time to review the complaint and respond, then we would have to request an extension of time for good cause by contacting the Division of Open Government. With that in mind, I'm going to open up a discussion and before doing that, I would like to just make sure that we are clear what we are discussing and not discussing. We're not here to discuss the merits of different ways of looking at school enrollment or any other topic that was within the content of those emails. We're just here to discuss the, this open meeting law complaint and, and what we are going to do about it. And to word that end, the open meeting law is not short, you know, so I just pulled out this one section so that we understand what we are doing. This is section 23, Enforcement of Open Meeting Law, Complaints Hearing Civil Actions, Section B. "At least 30 days prior to the filing of a complaint with the Attorney General, the complainant shall file a written complaint with a public body setting forth the circumstances which constitute the alleged violation and giving the body an opportunity to remedy the alleged violation, provided, however, that such complaint shall be filed within 30 days of the date of the alleged violation. The public body shall, within 14 business days, receive of a complaint, send a copy of the complaint to the Attorney General and notify the Attorney General of any remedial action taken. Any remedial action taken by the public body in response to a complaint under this subsection shall not be admissible as evidence against the public body that a violation occurred in any later administrator or judicial proceeding relating to such alleged violation. The Attorney General may authorize an extension of time to the public body for the purpose of taking remedial action upon the written request of the public body and showing up good cause to grant the ex, the extension." So hopefully, everyone is understanding what we are doing here and what we are not doing and with that, I will, I will open discussion. Member Extrim?
I just, I, I want to be clear so that we all understand that what we're discussing is deliberation. And, and just to reiterate that what Vice Chair Martini says, we're, we're not discussing what it is that is included in the emails outside of, or their, or their accuracy. Keeping that in mind, I wanted to read the general law and I know that this will bore some people, but I wanted to read the, the general law about what deliberation is. And I will share that if any, if anyone would like me to. Let's see.
Please share.
Absolutely. So here is Chapter 30A, Section 18. And this is a definition of all the things that would be included in, in Open Meeting Law references. So deliberation, deliberation is an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. Provided, however, that deliberation shall not include the distribution of a meeting agenda, scheduling information or distribution of other procedural meeting or the distribution of reports or documents that may, that may be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of a member is expressed. So reading that and, and I have a, I'm able to sort of fight through legalese. I, I went to frequently ask questions because it seemed to me that it, we would be well-served to get a little bit more salient information. So I'm going to share another page. So frequently asked questions about the open meeting law. And I'm going to go down scrolling, scrolling, scrolling. So here it is. "Meeting law deliberation, electronic communication. May a public body member communicate with other public body members over email." And I want to remind everyone that the mayor in this, in this situation is a member of the school committee and as such is liable or, or responsible to uphold open meeting law. So, "May a public body member communicate with other public body members over email? Yes, but only in limited, limited circumstances. A member of a public body may email other public body members on matters within jurisdiction of a public body, so long as the email does not reach a quorum of the public body. Communication between and among a quorum of the public body and matters within the jurisdiction of the public body must occur during a notice meeting." And there's the, the law and sections. "A public body member may lawfully email a quorum of the public body only to discuss scheduling a meeting, distribute a meeting agenda, or to distribute reports or documents to be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of a member of the public body is expressed." So I just, I wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what it was that we were, were discussing and what it was that had brought us here to the, where we are today.
Does any other member have a comment? Or wish to discuss something in relation to the matter?
Mossad?
Member Johnson Mossad, is that you?
Yes.
Here we go.
I don't know if you can stop this, this screen share. Thank you. Now I can see whether I'm in the Well, in considering this complaint, there's kind of two conflicting ideas in my head at the same time. The first is, I really feel the pain of people who are watching this and just want us to be focused on the work of the committee, solving the big problems, getting in the way of the educational outcomes of our students and really working on the business of the schools and not on members filing complaints against members. On the other hand, I think that our committee does need a refresher on open meeting law and I think even just what has happened today is, has been useful. So I, this is not the first problem with open meeting law that this body has experienced. It's just the first one in recent history that one member has filed a complaint against another member about it. So I think ideally you could put open meeting law on the agenda of a school committee and we could just discuss it, discuss the problems that have come up and burn together rather than filing complaints against each other. I don't think that's what the public wants us to be doing. As far as the substance of the complaints, I think the mayor's in a tricky position in terms of having both the office of the mayor and the school committee. So the kind of first item, it's, she may need to do certain things as a mayor that conflict with her role as a school committee and open meeting law and that's above my pay grade. I feel like I could use some technical assistance to understand those distinctions, but the other one, I, I feel the mayor was just sharing information, you know, that this, this opinion, this legal opinion was thought and the information was shared with us. I don't see the deliberation aspect, so maybe someone can highlight that for me. If I, you know, once we get to the part where we determine our course of action, I think I would just be advocating that we enlist some training on open meeting law for ourselves as a body and including just a general overview, but also giving members a chance to ask detailed questions about items that have actually come up around open meeting law for this body.
Does any other member have something to add to the discussion at this point? I do, okay. Member Denise?
I was curious if you could run through the timeline of the Open Meeting Law complaint. I'm kind of curious and I'm adding at the days to find out why we couldn't bring this to our regular meeting in June because we did vote to table the censure issue until June. So unless there is a really specific filing issue and timeline issue, you mentioned 14 days, but you also mentioned 30 days. And it's 22 days from the time that she filed it to the date of our next meeting. So I'm a little confused as to what the timeline is on that, so I'd like some clarification on that. But also I feel like the mayor, no matter who the mayor is, they, that person in that position needs a way to make corrections and clarifications when things are not reported correctly. And of course, the mayor could have come to a school committee meeting and just popped in and corrected something. There are many ways for them to do it. And I think that it would have been a far better use of our time and our students' resources to have opened lines of communication or the chair should have opened lines of communication with the mayor to find out if they needed a venue to make corrections about the enrollment numbers. So I just feel like there's a logjam there where communication isn't happening. I don't, did not see any deliberation occur in the emails, so I cannot speak to that, but I certainly am thankful for any and all information that comes from on high because I don't think that we receive enough of that. So I'd like to find out why this isn't being talked about at our meeting on June 14. Thank you.
Well, I did not write the complaint, so I don't know the answer to that question and I am sure that the timeline is in here somewhere, but as I said before, the law is not short and it's a bit complicated. It looks like maybe Member Extrim has information pertinent to that.
I do, and, and it's thank you for bringing up the censure. So the, the censure is something that the school committee does within its own time scale. The, the open meeting law violation is administered and, and conducted based on the state's timeline. And it may be, I don't, I don't know if you're counting weekend days. I'm not looking at calendar, but it has to be within 14 days, business days, that the response is made.
Of the day that it was filed? 14 business days?
I think the question is, what is the timeline? I think the question is, what is the, the required timeline for making a complaint after an alleged violation?
That's one of the questions. That's one part.
Okay.
That's all my input.
Okay.
Okay. Because
All right, so I, I am not going to, I don't know the answer to that question and, and I don't want to sit in silence and go through that, especially because I don't, as you mentioned, I think we need to be efficient with our time because we're all spending an extra evening doing this.
Yeah, but that's the problem. That's why I want to know because if this comes up in the future, we need to be respectful of how efficient we are with our time and we shouldn't be doing this if, if, if the timeline allows it to be at a regular meeting. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify it. Sort of as part of Glenn's point of us learning how this works. We've never done this before. We maybe shouldn't move forward without understanding all the parts of it.
Maybe the, I have my own comments to make. Maybe the secretary would be willing to look through and see if you cannot find an answer to that while I'm doing that.
Give me, so Elizabeth, give me your specific question because I want to make sure that I answer it.
Okay. How soon from the violation do you have to make the complaint? What's the timeframe? Once you make the complaint, how much time do you have after you make the complaint?
I think we already have the answer to the second. We, we must provide a response within 14 days, 14 business days, which we are at right now. That's the answer to the second question. The first question, I don't know. So, so I think the secretary could please look for the answer to that first question while I am talking. And before, however, does any other member have a discussion that they would like to add? Mayor Weidinger?
Yes, I actually believe the accurate timeline is 22 days. I did ask the city clerk about that. So it says 14, but depending on, we've had a holiday and so forth and so on. That's not really what I want to talk about, but if it's an issue for you, you might want to clarify that. I just want to simply say, I have not filed my response yet. So it's a little bit the cart before the horse here. I do, according to the 22-day calendar, I think it's 22 days, have until June 6th, I think it is, June 5th or June 6th to file that response. So we will be filing a response which I have discussed with and given to the city attorney. So by the rules of the, that you were reading, I do have the right to assign it to a, a city attorney. So I just am just expressing the fact that it's a little bit the cart before the horse here. But I appreciate the fact that you all are attempting to work your way through it. And similar to Chair Poiety, I am also the subject of this. I believe I will be leaving the meeting as well. And if you, if you really need me for any additional information, depending on what it is, I might be able to be reached to be, to comment, but I feel like I should leave the meeting as well, because I am the subject of the accusation, alleged accusation. And it really, an appropriate remedy, and I appreciate member Johnson Musad's comments, an appropriate remedy for this really is the venue of the Attorney General's office. They will be the ones to determine the fault, if it exists at all, and, and suggest a remedy. And it could well be that we all get ourselves a little bit of a brush up on the open meeting law. That could just very well be part of it. I'm speculating there. But certainly, while we deal with it all the time, it is sometimes often, we don't consult every detail of the open meeting law before we take action. So that's simply my statement. You will be receiving my response, I suspect, within the week, this week, and, and then I suppose we'll take it up at another time. That'll be up to you folks, so. If, if you're, if you have questions, I might be able to answer them. I, I don't think, Elizabeth, your question is being answered precisely, but this is why we need some help. Thank you.
Okay, I think member Wallace is the only one who hasn't made a, a comment. Do you wish to make a comment during this discussion?
I just don't know where we're, what we're trying to accomplish. That, I mean, I'm sitting here waiting to listen to find that out. Thank you.
Okay, I see that member Johnson Musad, and member Exrem both have hands raised, and I don't know if that was from your initial comment, or this is a second comment.
Second comment for both of us.
Mine is related to member Denise's questions.
Okay, well, in that case, I will take your, your hand first, member Exrem, the secretary.
And so what I did find was, again, at that frequently asked questions about open meeting law, same page, and I will share it. Sorry, it scrolled away. Here we go. Individuals who allege a violation of the open meeting law must first file a complaint with the public body, alleged to have violated the OML. The complaint must be filed within 30 days of the date of the violation, or the date the complainant could reasonably have known of the violation. And then this goes on to follow, I can read the rest, but it is what's included in the, in the complaint form. Does that meet your needs? Or does that answer your question?
It answers my question, and it confirms what I really don't like about this situation, because it could have easily have been filed closer to our June meeting date, and we shouldn't be spending our evening doing this when we have a meeting upcoming in two weeks to be handling these sorts of things, and something similar already on the table. So I find it sort of disrespectful that that's the timeline that was chosen, and that we're in here. And it would be a very difficult and busy time for parents right now. A lot of us have a lot of things going on. So I, it makes me feel very disrespected by, by the chair, that they would choose this particular way to manipulate the timeline. It's happened before in other situations, and it's just something that I don't think is, is right. That's all I have to say.
Remember Jonathan Musad?
I guess I was thinking, you know, the mayor said it's not really our job to remediate the situation, but I really believe that in the documentation that was read, we have to propose what we think we should do to make it right. But I also think that if the mayor is preparing a response, and that response is gonna probably arrive for us before the next regular meeting of the school committee. But I think you're saying we can't wait that long to make our proposal for the, what to remediate, right? So, so I guess I'll make a motion for what we should do to address the situation, which is that, what?
I'm sorry, I haven't gotten to make a, a comment in the discussion yet. If you don't mind, I'd like to do that.
Please, go ahead.
And so I think, I, I always want to let, let everybody else go first, especially in this unusual situation where I am running the meeting. And I think that from my point of view, the, in particular, the message sent by the mayor on April 20th, on which the entire school committee was copied, was, in my mind, beyond a shadow of a doubt deliberation in regards to the school budget. I think it's, the open meeting law can be somewhat complicated, and I'm not interested in like slapping anybody's wrist over messing up from time to time. People do that, you know, it's just part of trying to do the, do the work of government. What struck me at that time was that it was a very obvious, very blatant kind of violation to send this treatise to the entire school committee. And the other thing that, that bugged me about it was that this particular issue, the school budget, this has got to be the issue that the public has demonstrated that they care the most about of anything that has come up in, in my time on the school committee, which admittedly is not that long. It's only been about a year and a half, so, but all the same, we've had an incredible amount of public interest in this particular topic, and, and it did make me uncomfortable that this discussion about school finances that carried on, it was essentially, to me, a continuation of the city council meeting and sort of pushing into the next school committee meeting, and that this was taking place by email amongst only the members of these two bodies. I, I felt that it was very inappropriate, from my point of view. And that discussion should be happening in public view, especially on something that the public obviously cares so very much about. So that being said, I, I, I'm not sure that the mayor is correct that she needs to file a response about this. This is the complaint being, an open meeting law complaint being made against the school committee itself. I do think it's helpful to have the committee make its own report when we have something really obvious happen. That is a, that's a violation of the open meeting law, because reporting it ourselves, coming up with our own remedy shows good faith. And I think the mayor was also incorrect when she said that the Attorney General would be the one essentially making a determination about this. And the, that, because I did look at that part of the open meeting law, and it says that the Attorney General may conduct an investigation, but they will not necessarily do so. And I think that may be affected by what we decide to do or not do as a remedy. And member Johnson Musad, I think you are right, that we need to be respectful of the time of the public and try to keep our time conserved towards doing things that are impactful and matter to the students, and that we could all certainly use more information, more of a refresher, and a deeper understanding of the open meeting law. I don't think there's any harm in that. So I had a motion in mind, but since you said motion first, I will, I will let you take the floor on that.
I'd love to hear your motion.
Okay, I was going to do this. I move that each member of the school committee review the text of the open meeting law and one of the following: Review the open meeting law guide, or attend a webinar training offered by the Office of the Attorney General, and inform the chair as such by email anytime within the next 60 days. Would anyone care to second?
I'll second.
And discussion, since it's my motion, I, I will speak first and just say that I thought that this would provide every member of the school committee a good chance to get a more recent, more thorough understanding of the open meeting law. It will help us to hold ourselves and each other accountable better going forward. And I, and I figured if we do this sometime within the next 60 days, that gives everybody plenty of time, and it's not too onerous. Other discussion? Member Wall?
In the, at the end of the 60 days, is that when we would decide what steps to take? Or will it be too late then? I mean, I just want to know what we're trying to accomplish.
That is the step.
What is your vision? Okay, that is all we're going to do is review open meeting law.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Susan Farber has her hand up, vice chair.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that, Susan.
I'm wondering if you're able to post that, probably that motion into the chat.
Yep.
It was a long motion.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other discussion while I'm doing that?
May I?
Yep.
So I think that's a great option. My only concern is that, not concern, I think that if we were to have a training that came to the school committee, I understand that everyone's time is valuable, but we could learn from each other's questions. That would be my only rationale for not going with that option.
Susan, is that coming through in the chat? For you? Okay, thank you. Member Johnson Musad?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like your, your motion, because it's very expeditious, and we could get this done and move on to other topics. So that is in my thoughts, and then the other thing I'm thinking is just, the one thing I think, feel like I would be missing is like, if they came into a basic overview of open meeting law, you're right, like that's something we could just do at a webinar, or reread the pamphlet. But the specific questions that members have about recent things that have happened, and asking for someone to tell us, you know, explain this to us with these particular examples, not just this complaint against the mayor, but also there was some complaints about the posting of the last meeting, the adding of agenda items to agendas after they've been officially posted. Those types of questions, I feel like would be useful for us as a body to hear together. So maybe I, I don't know, maybe it would be a friendly amendment to, in addition, ask the superintendent to compile questions from the school committee about particular things that we've run up against and get answers, either from someone writing it up, or coming and doing a training based on those questions. I know that's a, it's not exactly a clear friendly amendment, but that's the gist of what I'm wondering about.
Would it? Okay, and that strikes me as something that would be good as a separate motion. It's a standalone motion.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable to you?
Sure.
Okay. And any other discussion on the motion, which is currently in the chat? Member Denise?
Um, I have to agree with member Johnson Musad. I think that if we're gonna do something like this, then we need to do it under the umbrella of professional development as a committee together. I don't, I think that we should be doing regular training around these issues, so that we're all in the same cage. I don't think that just having a sort of honor system that in 60 days, someone's gonna read the manual and write an email is a good remedy for the situation. I also don't necessarily think of the group training as a remedy for the situation. I don't know what the remedy is, but I think that we should, as a group, do these kinds of classes, and it is suggested by MASC that we do these things regularly, and it is recommended that we do these things, other school committees do these things, and we don't, we have not done anything as a body, not one thing, since I've been here. So I think that it would be a great first step to even do something together, where we get our questions answered, and we learn a little bit more about what we're doing and how to do it properly. But I don't think that that's necessarily a remedy. And I don't know what the remedy is. Maybe we need some time to find out what an appropriate slap on the wrist is, I'm not sure.
Okay, would anybody else like to make a first comments? Okay, and I would make a second comment. Member Denise, I, I appreciate what you said, and one of the thoughts that I have had is that this would be a useful thing for the proposed ad hoc committee. Sorry.
Vice Chair Martini, member Wall, has her hand raised?
I know, but I think she already had a first comment. Am I incorrect?
Okay. I didn't believe so, but I could be mistaken, that's fine. No problem.
I will, I will defer to you, member Wall.
No, go ahead and finish, and then let, may I speak?
Okay, I was just going to say that I had, had some similar thoughts along lines to Denise in regards to the ad hoc committee that we discussed last month to follow up on our school committee self-evaluation. This was, that is, self-evaluation was so long ago at this point, that I don't remember exactly what the most important topics were that members were raising, but I think our need for PD in relation to open meeting law might be something that, that, that would be perfect for that subcommittee. However, we haven't informed it yet, so I didn't bring it up at this meeting, but I think that would, might be very useful as something to charge that subcommittee with, once it is created. Member Wall?
Yes, I think that all of us could benefit from having a meeting where we have professionals brought in to teach us about open meeting law and, and other things that we would like to add to that agenda. The problem with doing, I mean, we have to have meetings where we don't violate open meeting law, that we posted it, and that we're going to do so-and-so, and invite the public to listen to it. You know, that's the, the catch to all meetings that member Denise would like for us to do more together, but we have to do it together in public. And I think that having pointed out that the mayor made a mistake in sending those emails to us is probably adequate for her chastisement, but I do think that we all could stand to have training on, on how to be a good public official. So I, I would make a motion that we have a meeting where we brought, bring somebody in from MASC or somebody to help us with how to conduct, how to behave as a good public official as a member of the school committee.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just want to say that we're still on the Catherine's motion at this point, so.
Any other discussion on the motion at hand? And then we will, we will entertain another motion in regards to training. Seeing none, member Exrem? Seeing none, member X room, would you please take a roll call?
Well, absolutely. Susan Farber, do you want to, do you want to read the motion back to us?
Thank you.
It is also in the chat. The motion is that each member of the school committee review the text of the open meeting law and do one of the following. Review the open meeting law guide or, excuse me, attend a webinar training offered by the office of the attorney general and inform the chair as such by email anytime within the next 60 days.
All right, everyone is clear?
Actually, just thought of a friendly amendment. But maybe it would be inform the vice chair or inform the superintendent since the chair is the one who made the complaint.
Any comments on what members think would be appropriate?
I'm more inclined to agree that we should do a, a public meeting of, or public training. And if that is something which, so saying that, I would probably say no to this motion. But not because I'm not interested in the information. I just think there's that are doing a public session together with the training was, would be more effective. I agree that it would be far more efficient, but, but I think that as a, a group, we could use a, we could use a public training together.
Okay. I'm sorry, member Johnson Musa, I'm just trying to find the little piece that I read out earlier about assigning a person. Okay, the public body may delegate this responsibility that is sending a the attorney general a copy of the complaint and a response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the body, its counsel or a staff member.
It's the, the response being what it is that we do, not they would decide what we could do.
My friendly, my friendly amendment was about who do we report that we went to the training, the webinar or read the report? So that it's your motion that I'm.
All right, so I will take a friendly amendment that members will inform the vice chair as such by email anytime in the next 60 days. If people feel that I would be the appropriate person to send this response to the attorney general.
It's not about you sending the response to the attorney general. It's about because what we're going to be sending to the attorney general is what we decide tonight, we want to do to remediate the problem. And what, one of the things we're deciding to do is to have members, if we vote this, members will be sending an update to currently the chair about whether or not we've attended the webinar or read the open meeting law. And so there's now two, because of your motion, there's now basically two reports, one that the body will make to the attorney general and one that individual members will make to Chair Poiety or to you about whether or not we've attended the training or read the manual.
I guess I'm not understanding what why is it important that members would report their participation to the chair or to me or to?
You're the one who made the motion that said that because the, the motion says, I move that each member of this school committee review the text of the open meeting law in one of the following, review the open meeting law guide or attend a webinar training offered by the office of the attorney general and inform the chair as such by email anytime within the next 60 days. So in this case, we will be attending a webinar training or reading the open meeting law guide and then reporting that to the chair, but the chair also happens to be the person who made the complaint. So all I'm saying is when we're reporting back about whether we went to the webinar or whether we read the the open meeting law guide, let's not report that to the person who made the complaint.
Okay, so I am, I will accept a friendly amendment to change chair to vice chair in the motion. Is there a second?
I don't think you need a sec, well, whoever seconded the original motion would have to accept the friendly amendment.
That would be member X room.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none, please carry on, carry on.
Member Denise?
No.
Secretary X room, I'm also no. Member Johnson Musa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Member wall?
No.
That is three noes and two yeses. The motion fails.
Member Johnson Musa, I would believe you wish to make a motion.
Okay. My original motion was based on your motion, passing. I, I moved that the school committee direct the superintendent to coordinate an open meeting law training for the school committee based on questions members submit to the superintendent.
I'll second that. You're done.
Yep.
Members, can you?
I am seconding that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a motion by member Johnson Musa in a second from member Denise. Susan Farber, do you have the, the text of that down?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, discussion, and since it's your motion, I would offer that to you first, member Johnson Musa.
I think I've already spoken to why.
Okay, I believe member wall, what's up? Next.
I'm wondering if the motion is too restrictive to have it just about open meeting law when there are other issues that we would like to have to help us be better members of the school committee.
I could speak to that.
I think, um, member X room, I'm going to hand up first and hasn't spoken to it yet, so I will.
I think my comment might be almost the opposite of G. I think that the motion is too specific. I think if we ask for someone to do a training about open meeting law, we can ask those questions of that person when they're doing the presentation because they would be well versed in open meeting law. I don't, I don't know that we would need to present questions beforehand. My only thought. Thank you.
Any other first comments? Remember Johnson Musa?
I guess part of why I was thinking about submitting questions in advance was that I actually, we did respond to a prior open meeting law complaint by having a mask come and do an open meeting law training for the school committee. And at that, it was, there were no questions from the school committee. And I think it felt more difficult to ask questions in a public setting or something. Anyway, that's why I was thinking of of having them compile it because as you're saying, you know, the office of the attorney general does offer a basic webinar on the basics of open meeting law. So we can all access that and we have all the documentation. What we don't have is there's these specific cases that the school committee has been grappling with and I feel like it might be useful to invite members to ask questions and have the trainers come and train to our questions.
I have a question unless someone else wants to speak. In what context did that previous training take place?
It was also where someone had filed an open meeting law complaint. And as a school committee, we decided what we wanted to do to remediate the issue was to have a training for the school committee on the open meeting law.
Thank you. I actually meant what physical context, like where and how did it take place?
It was in person at a school committee meeting and that's what, what this would be also. I mean, any, any training that we do will be a public session.
Number wall.
Why were you allowed to ask questions at that meeting? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
We were allowed to. It's just that nobody did and I, I don't know, maybe it was the particular makeup of that particular school committee, but it felt like people were just wanted to get it over with. Not answer any questions and move on. So maybe this group would be different, you know? I just feel like a customized training is so much better than just having them come in and, and do the, cover the basics, which we can get in a webinar. And then we kind of have to rely on whether or not people and some people may be uncomfortable asking questions that involve implicating other members of the school committee, you know? So that's why I thought maybe if we wrote to this, our questions first, it would be useful.
Glenn, I agree. I think that was the makeup of that school committee. I remember that training.
Okay. I can see how members of any public body might be reticent to ask specific questions that may cause problems or either officially or within their relationships with other, with other members in a, in a context like that. It's part of why I had thought that attending the webinars offered by the AG's office would be helpful because generally speaking, there is a Q and A. Run them at the AG's office, but most webinars I've attended these days have a Q and A session at the end and people are able to be relatively anonymous. And so I don't know, I don't know how helpful it would be to to offer a training in that context. I'll support it. I mean, I'm all for training, but it's hard to find a way to discuss and get, ask questions and discuss specifics like that in ways that comply with meaning law, which is why we end up in such a a little quagmire over things like this. Member Denise, you look like you wanted to say something.
I'm just scrolling through the O M L portion of the website and I did find, and now I cannot find it again because that is a massive website. There are ways for committees to do work together as a group that is not public work and not executive session work, but is outside of the scope of public discourse and is 100% for members engaging with other members to become better members. Like you can do professional development together. Masks wouldn't be suggesting that we do it if every pope, if every instance of professional development was a violation of O M L. There is a way to do it. There's a specific subset of the law that allows for it. And I had it on the tip of my finger and then I scrolled right by and I kind of went again. But it does exist and we are supposed to do it. So it almost seems like if we can't find it and know what it is, how can we take advantage of it? And then move forward into this new phase of professional development, which I know that we are all going to take advantage of at some point in time during our term. So I don't think that it's a question of if we're going to do it, but how we're going to do it so that everyone feels comfortable doing it together? And how we're going to make sure that we're not violating anything and we all feel comfortable doing it is probably more the question. We can do it. And I'm sure we can get some guidance from mask about exactly what setting and venue that needs to be in, in order for us to not violate anything. So I'm just, I'm just so encouraged that we would even talk about moving forward and doing something as a group that isn't purely about the public discourse that we have to have, but rather about being better.
You are correct. There is something called a working session.
Yeah, yeah, working session. You're right.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
Okay, yes, I'm making a friendly amendment then. I don't exactly remember the wording of Glenn's motion.
Do you want to read it out?
I can do that. The motion is that the school committee direct the superintendent to coordinate an open meeting law training for the school committee based on questions members submit to the superintendent.
So then would the friendly amendment be maybe within, within the scope of a working session? School committee members should propose their questions to be answered by an expert or how do you, because I think that member Johnson Musa's motion kind of already covers what I said, so I'm not sure exactly. The addition.
I just found the limiting of it to the questions that we ask before we're trained. Limiting. I mean, I think that we should have some training and then ask questions based on the, the things that we've seen, whether it's a working meeting or a public meeting.
So then maybe the friendly amendment is to make is to just have the school committee have a working session with an expert from mask to help us understand not just open meeting law, but how to be a better public official.
I have an idea for how I could amend my own motion. I wonder if, if it could just say informed by questions asked by the school committee rather than based on. So then you could have an open meeting law training. But it also is customized for us a little bit based on, I mean, informed by questions that we ask, but it doesn't limit us to only, only having it focused on the questions that we ask.
Okay, so Susan Farber, help me out if I'm getting this wrong. I think the amended motion reads something like the superintendent will be directed to coordinate an open meeting law training within the context of a working session. Is that what we called it? Informed by questions forwarded to the superintendent by members. And somebody is, member Johnson Musa, please feel free to clean that up.
It might end as the original, informed by questions members submit to the superintendent.
Thank you. Member Johnson Musa, how does that sound?
I accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay. I think you were the second.
I accept in second again.
Okay, further discussion on this motion, the amended motion. Okay, seeing none. Member X room, would you please take a roll call?
Number Denise?
Yes.
Secretary X room, I'm a yes. Member Johnson Musa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Member wall?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
Okay, there are no further items on the agenda for this evening, so I will move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We need a motion or how, how will it be handled from here? Will who, who's going to respond to the attorney general's thing and what will they be responding with?
So that never mind.
Okay, well, I think that that will need to be either myself or the secretary. Does anyone have an opinion?
Well, truth be told, I would prefer that the superintendent forward the response to the attorney general because I'm quite certain that she is. Well, truth be told, I would prefer that the superintendent forward the response to the attorney general because I'm quite certain that she is well versed in how to do that.
And the response will just say what we just, what we decided today to try to address the problem.
Correct.
Does the form ask us to say like whether or not we agree that an open meeting law violation happened or anything? No? Okay.
No, that's not our determination. That's the attorney general's determination.
Okay. I'm happy.
Okay, uh, hmm. I'm not clear on whether that requires a motion or not. Maybe we should do it just to be safe.
All right, want me to try?
Yes.
I moved that we direct the superintendent to respond to the attorney, to the, to the, um, to I'm sorry, I moved that we direct the superintendent to report to the attorney general what we decided tonight to remediate the complaint.
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Member Denise?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. Member Johnson Musa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Member Wal?
Yes.
We are unanimous. Superintendent gets.
Okay, less for you than me. Uh, okay, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Member Denise, I'll get to that one.
Okay.
And, uh, we are remote, so I will do a roll call. Remember Denise?
Yes.
Extron, yes. Member Johnson Musa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Member Wal?
Yes.
We are unanimous and we are done.
Thank you and good evening.